For Wednesday, September 2nd, we have a review of work session discussion meeting minutes. And no questions. Department head report.
Just a couple updates, a couple items. First of all, spent some time out at Corambee Park. Hopefully, I think we came up with an alternative to actually fixing the landslide for that kind of money. We think we can probably add another road to get to access those two shelters. Something that I do want to discuss with Tim. Tim, I have a lot of things to discuss. We'll get together, we'll sit in a meeting for a week to discuss these things. But it's going to affect a little bit of the disc golf. So I'll schedule something with Mr. Caltori. If you guys want to take a ride out there, someone to take a ride out there and kind of show you what our plans are.
Do you think that would be the best option, rather than fixing it at full price? That's probably the next best thing to do.
It's a lot of money, yeah.
Really? When you, when you look at doing that, the process of it would be us getting an engineer on board to, or somebody to do the drawings and put that out for, you know, to put that out for a bid. I still think it's going to be a decent amount of money.
Yeah, it's, it's going to go out for a bid. It'll probably, it'll have to, but I don't necessarily know. I mean, it's always nice to have an engineer to be involved and be able to fall back on someone. But I can, we can, we can look into seeing, you know, what kind of costs are associated with that as well.
Is that what you recommend? I mean, we're after, we can't just put, hey, we want to put a road out 100 yards for bid. There has to be some kind of effort specs.
Right. Yeah.
The other thing is, I finally got a response from a contractor for the foundation repairs to be done with the leak. I met with him this morning, actually, and he told me that he would try to have numbers for me by this evening. I asked him how far out, he's, he's probably three weeks to a month out before he would be able to do any kind of work for us. In that time, I will try to continue to get prices and get people to come in. But I don't, I don't understand what's going on. People don't want, you know, they don't, they don't want to work. You know, I don't, I don't get it, but I can't get any responses, so.
Was this heavy rain that you said, was it?
It affected it, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for Dan? Do you know the department head report? Tim?
The, it looks like Duquesne Light was out Thursday, Friday of last week to start taking the pole out. That's where the landslide is. The whole hangup has been Duquesne Light removing an electric pole. So now that they got that off, I haven't heard from PennDOT that they've got a hard date when they're going to start. But that was what was keeping them from doing any work, and PennDOT kept pushing them out. Or not been up, but Duquesne Light kept pushing them out a week, a week, a week, till they finally got out there and removed it. So I would expect, and I don't have a hard date, but I think probably somewhere after Labor Day, they're probably going to start, if they're going to do it. And I think they're probably going to double up on shifts in order to get it done before November, which is what I think that the contractor, and I know the contractor had told me that that's what they would have to do as their window tightened. But again, there may be a date there that they say, well, you just can't get it done and move it to the spring. But at this point, I don't have anything hard or fast other than Duquesne Light's finally gotten the pole out. So that'll move that one down. September 8th, next Tuesday, a week from yesterday, we open the ice arena. You know, I've got to get some information out of that. We got it on our website, we have it on our Facebook page. We've got to inform, again, try to do the best we can to educate and inform the public of what our protocols are going to be coming in and using the facility. So, you know, I think that, you know, like any other organization or business, we're going to have people that are just going to need to be educated as to how it works. And that's going to be our transition point. I think it's going to be kind of crazy, probably at least through the month of September, if not partially in October, as we have different things starting at different times as we get towards the colder weather. Hockey, some light hockey will start, figure skating will start right away. Others will start near the end of the month. Indoor tennis will come in middle of October, third week of October, once the weather starts to break. So you have different groups that just aren't coming in and don't, won't be paying attention to the rules. And we'll be monitoring what the CDC and the state has on regards to the order that's out there and looking to try to increase the ability of bringing people into the building as quickly as we can, but staying within whatever the rules are at this point in time. When you take a look at the building, the hockey arena is zone A, if you will. There would be 25 people in that building, okay? The tennis walking loop is zone B. And then the lobby's more of a transition area, because we're not allowing people to gather and hang out. They come in, they go to their activity, they kind of leave and they go. So the chances of, and I'm going to have to monitor this, of us having more than 25 people at one time for any extended period of time in that lobby is probably real low percentages. So I'm thinking it's going to, it's just a pass-through zone. So looking at that, I've spoken with all the ice user groups. I'm just now engaging the tennis professionals in regards to that. The challenge, the ice side, I'm not too concerned about, other than, again, there'll be some family members and people that are looking to kind of have more than 25 in there. And that's, we're seeing that all over the place in regards to sports. On the tennis side, we're only going to have two tennis courts going, which would allow us to have four students and instructor. That'd be 10 people on the tennis courts, which would allow us a cap of 15 on the walkers. That's 25 people for that building. And that's going to be the bigger nut to try to challenge, to try to manage. Not sure how that's going to go. You know, we've got groups that come in to think that, you know, you know, certain groups who come in, want to have lunch there, and we're going to just, we're going to be changing their behavior in regards to what they can and can't do. So, you know, that side of it's going to be that constant trying to remind them and educate them and tell them what, what we're doing and how we're operating along those lines. I, I would like to think that I'll have less headaches on the ice side at this point in time than I will have on the tennis whenever they start coming in. Because you have the BBTA group, which we work with in regards to the partnership we've had for years. You've got permanent court time, and then you've got private lessons. That's the first tier. That's where the bulk of our tennis rentals come from. And then you have the very occasional, once a month or once every other month, a high school or a school type of situation, or you have a league, and then you have walk-ins. Which, again, we're discouraging walk-ins. We're telling them, if we have a court, we'll sell it to them. But we're going to encourage them to put in a reservation so we know and can manage the traffic into the building as best we can. So over a period of time, I think that'll fall into place. But, you know, if the rules change, again, this is all up in the air for us in regards to, you know, changing on the fly like we need to.
What is the occupancy on the hockey side? I would assume it's occupancy per fire code gap when they talk about occupancy.
It will be that, well, you know, the bleachers sold $750. Okay, I know that side of it. I don't know that we've ever actually had a fire occupancy code for that building that I've ever been able to find along those lines. So I, I mean, you look at the square footage, 40,000 square feet in that building. If you divide by 36, it's like 1,100 people.
So are we telling, you probably know I'm going to answer this question. Are we telling the hockey leagues a certain number of people are allowed on the ice?
25 people.
Where did you get that number from?
That is a number that came out of the July 15th Department of Health State guideline in regards to indoor activities.
Okay, so, I'm, Jack, I know you were talking on that email from this weekend. A gentleman reached out to us and said, please provide some guidance on Governor Wolf's green phase restrictions. Parents, youth hockey players being told a maximum of 25 players allowed on ice at times. However, the green phase guidance states indoor recreation can have up to 50% occupancy, but appointments recommended for fitness facilities.
That green phase was done before July 15th update. So again, it's a timing, a type of, when people are looking at the information and what they're using as their benchmark along those lines. USA Hockey, PAHL have sent letters out, and most of these groups, whether they be PAHL, which is under USA Hockey, or our adult leagues, which is under USA Hockey, and PIHL, which is under USA Hockey, basically sent a memo out saying, we sent all your presidents this email telling them to communicate this with you is that if you have more than 20, if your rink allows you to have more than 25 people in there and that they understand that your leagues and your practices will not be sanctioned, and any insurance issues are 100% on you. They're not going to insure them, and we ask for insurance along those lines. They sent that email out to them, telling them from the governing body that that's what they were, that was their position.
Who will insure them?
Their own insurance companies probably.
Clubs all probably.
USA Hockey typically insures all of them. They have, they provide us their certificate of insurance to cover them underneath that side of it.
So are you explaining this to the?
Everyone.
Okay.
But are they communicating it down to their people? That's usually where it breaks down. That's the challenge we have in operating our facility is the fact is we're reliant, because it's not our program, for them to pass an inform, and I've been giving them for weeks now this information as to what it is. There was just a, I answered eight emails this weekend from people asking the same question.
So if these individuals aren't worried about being insured by USA Hockey or whoever, I mean, do we have the, do we have the right to let them have more individuals on the ice at one time or no? Is that a recommendation from the state?
Well, that's still, yeah, I mean, I think it's be a, it's a confusing area where, you know, the governor says, you know, it's 25 people.
I don't know anything about hockey, so how many people are on ice at once in hockey?
12.
12 each side or just 12?
12 total.
And to?
You might have a referee. Usually a referee, a scorer.
I know volleyball is having a tough time right now with the way they're doing it. They're starting to have 25 in the gym, they're saying, and they're going to start putting people out in the hallways. The subs, the subs out in the hallway, so whenever they go to work, subs are going to come in.
The way the order was written was basically, if you have a ceiling, floor to ceiling wall, and you can isolate the building, it's its own building, along those lines. So inside that, that's why zone A, zone B, and the way I've had, I've set it up to go down that path. You know, the, the rule is it's 25 people and the governing bodies. When you look at their, their position papers they came out with, typically in the first paragraph, not in the first two, it says CDC and state orders are what we're going to follow, is what they tell them in that document. So they're already going down that path. The Department of Health has said, this is how it is. And I've sent them that every, I didn't even send, I sent them the link for the whole document, and I cut out the four sections that were the most important, and I just gave them in a, in a kind of a Cliff Notes type of a situation. So they didn't have to go searching for it. Again, no one likes it. We want to get to more people. But at this point in time, that's what they're saying for indoor recreation is to invite people.
One thing that we talked about, I know, because I told you I got a couple of calls on this, is the Live Barn situation. So the Live Barn said that parents could sit someplace on their phone or at home and watch their kids play. If we can set that up, how much would that cost?
It shouldn't cost us anything.
For us to set up, and how quickly could we set something like that up?
I've got to check base with Kevin today, but Kevin and I have been talking about this. He was going to talk with Eric Brewer because of the fiber optics that come out of the emergency hazmat building. And then we were also talking with Comcast from a commercial standpoint to put a modem in that would give us a direct line. When we looked at this two years ago, we didn't have that infrastructure in place, and the cost was cost prohibitive to do it. So that infrastructure's now changed. So getting an answer from Eric on what we might be able to do is one strategy. The other is getting it from Comcast, and I hope to get to Kevin with Kevin today to find out what that is. And then once we get that set up, it's, the idea with Live Barn was is it's supposed to cost the rink owner nothing. They'll take care of the cost within reason. Well, the cost of the old way, well, two years ago, was way beyond anything they were going to pay for. But typically, if they're just putting in a basic cable line and that kind of, they pick that up. So there's no cost, if it's still the same, the way it was, to us, should not be. And in a sense, you then, who has a child participating in figure skating or whatever, you buy a subscription.
It's a subscription fee for parents if they want to watch.
And then the arena, even though it's minimal, would get some cash flow on that side of it. But I, you know, that, that.
Well, let's consider that. Obviously, most of this angst is about, people dropping off their kids and not being able to watch them play hockey, they're playing hockey. So if there's an alternate solution where they can at least sit outside in the car, assuming they can.
And I'm actively pursuing that at this point in time.
That's one of the big concerns, and this goes with high school football, is all, a lot of these schools are going to start live streaming their games. Well, now the issue is, are the parents and spectators more safe watching them as a group wherever they are, whether it's a bar in their town, or their house as a group of 25, 50 people congregating together, or in a more controlled situation at a stadium where you can control where people sit? That's my feeling about school right now, too. The kids are probably safer in school because they are controlled, they have to wear their mask, they're separated compared to running around during the day. I went to lunch at the mall the other day, and there was, I'm not going to say what school it is, there was like 10 kids together, and they were there eating lunch right beside each other. Well, the purpose of not being in school is to be separated from these kids because they can't practice social distancing. But they're out together during the day, and they're doing school together at home.
The Live Barn will give people the opportunity to watch how and where they watch, and how many people, that, that, those are personal choices. Giving them access to that, now that we have the infrastructure to which didn't exist before, gives us another option for them. I hope it's short of, I know today they're voting on 2787, which is supposed to be addressing occupancy. But that's only coming out of the House. And we all know it's probably going to go to the Senate, and it's got to go to the governor and all that kind of stuff. But they're working on trying to expand that occupancy. They started talking about it yesterday on the floor, and they, and they moved it to this morning. I think there'll be a vote this morning sometime. So we're all watching what's coming out of the House of Representatives regarding that. But it's pretty much only talking about school sports, and of course, the clubs like the Badgers and whatnot are asking, what about us? It'll probably include them, too. But there's also the overlap with the food and the beverage industry, because that 50% makes sense for them, too. So, you know, I think there's a lot of parallels that are running right now, and how fast it moves and what the governor will or won't do is going to be the question. What can we do to help give them access? You know, we give them the access through Live Barn. If they choose to buy the subscription, that's their choice. We're providing that opportunity, and I think we should. But up until two years ago, the cost was ridiculous because we just.
Well, I'm highly in favor of going in that direction, just like us videoing these things. I see no reason to stop this.
No, I want to do that.
I think the technology is the way to go. If nothing else, COVID has exposed our limitations to be able to communicate and effectively interact with people, and if we can do things like set that up. I'd love to see a proposal and a cost and see if we can't find some.
I'll pull that together.
Some money to, to help make at least that happen in the interim while, while we're trying to figure out.
It'll be an interest to them for October through the beginning of March. And then once everything's over, there won't be any interest in watching. I mean, it's a, it's a limited window as to what they're doing. We're in the bottom of a cereal bowl that's out in the middle of nowhere that didn't have infrastructure. I mean, it's, it was just, it's a tough situation, even getting a cell signal down there. So, you know, we're working on that side. I guess I'll bring that to you, and we're working on it. I hope to have some more answers, but definitely before the end of the week and not today, as to where we are in that. So that said, again, we got to get the word out in regards to the reopening. Anything we can do to help get the word out to the public so they're, they're prepared coming in, trying to use the facility so that they're not surprised. I mean, everyone knows the world's different right now, but to try to minimize that, that experience where, you know, they're, they're just trying to come in to do something, and we've got steps that have to be in place that they need to go through, and limits that we can do and know that they may have to wait in order.
If you have any suggestions on what method we should use rather than the six people who are watching this right now.
Anything we can do with the media.
People in the room, but whatever you think we need to do, let us know.
Anything we can do with the media, along those lines. And we're covering every other base that we can at this point. The other thing I have is the barn bash, which is less than a month away, about 26 days away. 24 days away. And I've reached out to the band and played a little phone tag, but I've been watching them. They've been doing shows, but the ones I've seen the most of typically have a ticket for entry along those lines. So they're controlling it. I actually tried to go to one of those down at Thursdays not too long ago, and I didn't have a ticket, and I couldn't get in. It was tapped as to what they were doing. So our barn bash is free, and it's just wide open, and we have that 250. I know we can spread out, a food truck, and putting all these things in place. And I'm just looking, how aggressive should I get and start moving that? Or should I continue to be conservative and rethink whether we should even pull the trigger on that? We're getting close, we've got to make, we really need to make a decision on it. And it fell off my radar, quite honestly, a couple of weeks ago, and it just kind of hit me like, oh my gosh, that's coming up. So, you know, that's an error on my part, but, you know, I should have been talking about this two or three weeks ago.
My opinion is probably staying the same from the food truck festival is, if someone doesn't want to attend because they don't feel safe, then they don't have to. I would like to see.
The event.
The event. I'd like to see things take place, you know.
Me, too.
I'm happy whenever I'm able to drive around, I'm seeing the kids playing sports, whether it's limited or whatever. But if they don't have to, if someone doesn't want to go because they don't feel safe.
There's just no way for us to know whether we have 250 or 100 or 400. I mean, that's what we just don't know. There's no way to control that. That's, that's the only kind of thing that's out there for us. So by putting, putting the event on, is a, is a platform for a stage, a tent.
You'll probably get more than 250 because people will want to go.
Yeah, I know that. And that's, that's where we start, and that goes against what the maximum for an event can be. So, I mean, that's, that's, we're consciously making a decision to kind of throw it to the wind.
Well, that's all maximum.
What's that?
Some people have other maximums.
I'm going to say that's just from the app order, order I know.
From Carlisle's line, but.
Yeah, Carlisle Car Show in Corvette. I understand that. There's a certain thing.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is, at this point, we still have the governor's mandate regarding outdoor activities being at 250. I'm not aware of any event being directly shut down by the state police because of that. But, you know, would it go against the governor's mandate? Or does that leave us as far as, you know, liability? And from the COVID thing, once again, someone would have to prove that they got COVID from someone at that event.
Yeah, which is impossible.
Right. But I guess the question is, what, what would the governor, the governor's route be? If we had had an event that had more than 250 people?
Are these 250, including staff and police officers?
It's supposed to be everything encompassed with the vendors, the.
Anybody with a heartbeat.
Everybody.
Is it the same for restaurants? I didn't think kitchen staff was accounted for.
Back at Kitchen, I think it's a little different. I think you're right on that.
25% of.
Back at Kitchen's a little different, but I'm not sure exactly what the logic is on why that is that way. But I think I've heard conversation that back at Kitchen is not part of the front of house.
Certainly, every organization's indoor big fall events are all being canceled.
I mean, our festival trees is canceled.
And outside, obviously, all the fairs were, were canceled for August and September. I don't know. I'm kind of ambivalent on it, but I don't want to get sideways.
I know that the, the, our act theater's having a play here in September. It's by ticket, by reservation, so it's outside. So they're controlling, again, the crowd. They're doing something, but they're controlling the crowd.
I don't know how we could.
How they're going to do that. I mean, that's, that's what they're promoting, is the fact is it's going to be a.
Everything you can remote, even pause, we think about is have just, you know, no charge, but people list.
Limited. Just like when they click into Home Depot or Walmart.
There's too many ways into that park to be able to do that.
Counting heads.
It's just, it's impossible.
Walmart's allowed 1,000 people in that building.
It's crazy.
I'm just looking for.
Start to talk about the logic of all this.
There's the governor's side of it, and there's the PR side, or reflection side of it. I'm just looking for, I'm happy to make it happen, but I just want to know that, you know, we're not.
So is, if, if we were to put a yellow or the orange fence up, let's just say the orange fence around.
Like a snow fence.
Where the park, where the barn bash is, as Jack said, click 250 and stop people. If they go up by the pool and sit and listen, is that part, is that part of the?
No, they're more, they're more than six feet apart. They can spread out.
You know, I mean, so.
I need you to take a position that that's not.
We can limit it to the actual field, but if somebody gets there.
Have better ears, and you can hear further away.
I'm sensing I move forward. That's, I'm just getting a.
Let's give it a shot.
I'm happy to do it. I, I look.
I mean, you probably have to get your numbers with, hey, we're going to have two food trucks, each have four people. That's eight.
Yeah, I got to know all that stuff, yeah.
Because then you can know how many people, we have someone click in.
Yeah.
Because if the food trucks are inside the yellow tank, if someone's outside listening by the pool and want to walk down and get food, they have to wait until, I mean, it's like you said, it's no different than waiting in line at Lowe's to get in when they're clicking in.
And we're not going to add the resources to run it that tight. It's just not going to happen.
What, what's the date?
26th of September.
It, it, my only concern is, you know, we've been trending in the wrong direction with our seven-day percent positive action. And that's where the governor's already put us on a watch list with eight other, other counties. We were down under five. Two weeks ago, we went to 5.3. Last seven days, we were 5.7. Friday, I expect that to dip down again as I'm tracking the numbers a little bit. If, if we're still substantially above that, then that's where.
That's three weeks from this, from this Saturday.
People could say, I'm hoping, I think we're trending, I think we're going to trend back down again. But that's the only thing where the governor could say, what are you doing the holding thing? And there were 500, 3,000 people there, and your numbers are moving in the wrong direction. That, that's my only concern, the optics of that. I, I'm in favor of going ahead and seeing what it goes, and we'll track these numbers, and hopefully we'll, we'll be in good shape. And we'll say we put as many controls as we could to keep it at.
Which is what I think we have a responsibility to do.
And, and hope that people are responsible and say.
What if, what if someone put a third-party form in to have a peaceful protest at the barn bash that night?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't have an answer for that. I just, I mean, I'm just trying to run a recreation department.
Depends on if they have paintball guns or not.
You could have more than 250 there, I would think.
So I know which direction we're in on that. So, yeah, any help you can get with the relation, and I got a, an executive session. That's all I got.
Any other department head report? We'll move to solicitors.
Need an executive session for personal matters and litigation matter.
Any questions? All right. Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Mann.
Just, just a couple of things, and, you know, Dan, you're talking about getting people to be done work. I mean, a 50-page, 55-page RFP to take Japanese knotweed and dead trees and bridge water crossing. I mean, I, I don't know what kind of response you're going to give us. Mentioned this to Gengar and the other, and there's like two pages that are relevant if I'm a landscaper, just wanting to bid on this job. Are we driving people away from submitting proposals or, or not? I mean, I, I don't know. If I'm a first-time landscaper and I look at this document to submit a bid for a job. I don't know. I, I'm not trying to put you on the flower, but I know there's some mandatory stuff, and it's got all the unit wages and, you know, prevailing wage stuff and resolutions that go back to somebody.
Yeah, there's a lot of boilerplate stuff in there. I think what we can maybe do, there's a mandatory walkthrough on the 15th. I can maybe see if we don't get a large turnout for that, maybe we can look up, go about redrafting this or putting something that's a little easier to get through.
Why is it, I mean, why is it like, does that stuff have to be in there so that people understand that there has to be prevailing wage?
Yeah, yes. There's a lot of, of stuff that's mandatory to be in there. I think Commissioner Manning's probably point is initially, it might deter some one way to look through the 55 pages, but at the end of the day, those are things that are legal requirements through the contract.
I mean, I assume that, but again, if I, you know, there's a lot of landscapers out there. I don't know how many people, but probably only somebody who's been in the past and understands is boilerplate is going to do that. So it's, it's just one example, I think, of where the bureaucracy gets overbearing for me.
It's probably going to have to be a larger landscape company that can handle this because of the machinery that's going to need to be brought down there, correct?
Yeah, and I mean, and I don't think there's anything in there that, I know some of our contracts, we don't want them bringing subcontractors, but I don't think there's anything wrong with bringing subcontractors.
That's a law in this one, yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't know how many lawn care landscaping companies actually do, you know, tree removal as well. So if someone does have, has an interest in, in doing the work that's, you know, proposed in that, we're making subcontract a, a tree service and to do tree removal.
Did the, would the subcontractor have to come to the walkthrough as well?
No, they would, they would fall underneath the contract.
I wasn't sure if, you know, if something goes wrong, it would just fall underneath.
It would go underneath the general contractor.
Not goes wrong, but if they take a tree out, we don't want to help.
Right. Yeah, our, our agreement is going to be with the person who bids, not their subcontractor.
I mean, it's like two pages that are relevant, the scope of work, the technical requirements, and then the rest is a bunch of. Anyway, I'll go out myself on that, but I, I just think some of the, we've been frustrated at times, I think, getting enough people to bid on projects. I'm not just talking about the work that you're involved with, or Tim or anybody else, but to go out and you see this stuff and you go, jeez, no wonder nobody wants to, to deal with doing work for the town.
With that being said, can I, I know, I know you've spent an awful lot of time down there. Or if you, you know, obviously you've looked through, are you, are you happy with, are you satisfied?
The scope of work, yeah. I mean, the, the Japanese knotweed, knotweed, a big thing, but that tree, we were down there again yesterday. Take, take a look at it. I mean, most of this part of this phase for this thing is simply getting rid of, well, the dead stuff. Right? And the invasive stuff.
Yeah, I just don't want to see something, you know, I don't want to have someone remove something, then you guys, what the heck you have to do that for?
It looks good. Then we'll, we'll figure out what phase two is, what we replant it with that's more maintainable. If we inherit. The only other thing, I've gotten a couple of calls, among the many things we aren't responsible for, is political signs. Somebody called and left a message saying that political signs are being stolen. And I think it's both sides. Just remind people that that is a misdemeanor. And if you steal multiple signs, that can become a felony. Um, and I think it's on both sides, just remind people that that is a misdemeanor, uh, and if you steal multiple signs, uh, that can become a, a felony. So I just ask people to be respectful during this election season, and, uh, you know, refrain from, uh, the vitriol and the, uh, sign stealing that's, uh, taking place in a couple of areas. Other than that, I think that's, uh, all I have.
I don't have anything, so we'll move, is there any other business?
Any update on the cars?
Uh, we received about thirty municipalities, we're cleaning up some applications from small businesses as they review, just turning in more documentation, getting a clearer picture. But, uh, ZNA has all applications, so they're, they're reviewing those, and Brian will be here tomorrow uh, to meet with some departments about internal requests, so.
Have they met the courts yet?
The courts will be tomorrow.
Good. Any other business? Any audience participation? All right, will be a re, to reconvene from executive session?
No.
All right, we'll move into executive session, not reconvene.